Call to order, the regular meeting agenda of the Township of Lyon Board of Trustees. It is Monday, October 6, 2025. We could please stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks. You both, where's she at?
Uh, she was in the meeting room, but go ahead, I got it.
Okay, uh, let the record show that we are all present.
Yep.
We're gonna move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
John, could I, uh, I'd like to request to remove items nine and 10 as 12A and 12B.
Okay, nine, 10. 12A and B.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as, as amended, adjusted. Support?
Oh, support.
Thanks.
Yeah, we have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're moving on to the approval of the agenda. I do have a few deletions to make in the unfinished business portion of top two ordinance amendments we'd like to delete, so we'll have no unfinished business at this time. And then D, and new business, uh, that has to be deleted also. Okay?
Is that a motion for me to support, or do you want me to make it?
Make the motion, if you would.
Uh, make, uh, make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to announcements and communications. I have one announcement. I'd like to introduce Rebecca Stevens. She's, uh, new to our office. She is there to help me. She's my associate in the supervisor's office. Rebecca, stand up. This is our Board of Trustees here. She's doing a wonderful job, too. She's helping me out a ton. Believe me, I need help.
I have a quick announcement, too. Um, if you aren't aware, there is a South Lyon school election, for a special election, on Tuesday, November 4th. If you need an absentee ballot, please contact the clerk's office or stop on in. Early voting starts, if you would like to just come in and early vote and not worry about absentee, the 25th of October through November 2nd. So we'll be early voting then. So you can always just pop up here to Township Hall and cast your vote then.
Okay, anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to call to the public, where this is a time that anyone can stand up and talk to the board on non-agenda related items, please only, and please keep it within three-minute time span. Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bob Copes. I'm one of the newer residents at Elko Farms at 26784 Ferguson Court. This evening's consent agenda, and thank you for, for hearing me. This evening's consent agenda contains three items for Elko Farms. I understand previously from Mr. Keese, and I quote, "We have not been notified by the developer that he has completed his common area obligations. The township continues to hold a large bond to ensure that they are done, but the development agreement between the township and the developer does not specify when they need to be completed." That ends the quote. "When there are open obligations, particularly those for which there is no defined completion date, should there not be a process whereby the township, perhaps the planning department, performs an occasional check-in with the developer to see where the timeline stands?" Elko Farms is 100% built out. We would really like to see where the developer, I would like to see the developer compelled to complete his part of it, get things wrapped up, um, and complete those obligations on a timely basis. Are you certain, this goes back to your consent agenda, which you've already moved on, but are you certain that the facilities that are changing ownership under this consent agenda are indeed in a state of readiness to be taken over by the township? I know of several storm sewer drains on our streets that are still covered up. Do you know if these drains actually work before they become the township's responsibility? As this public comment portion of your agenda happens following your approval of the consent agenda, I must ask if it is not too late to revisit the consent agenda and remove the three Elko Farms items for further discussion and hopefully tabling for a decision at a later date, once the operating conditions of all the infrastructure have been deemed fully and acceptably operational. I'm hoping there are others here this evening who wish to speak to this same developer issue, so I'll move on. I wish to speak next about the Huron Valley Trail. South Lyon is considering an ordinance specific to e-bikes. Lyon Township should be working in that direction as well, with an understanding of where South Lyon is airing. You see, South Lyon wants to restrict Class III e-bikes. The target, Lyon Township's target, needs to be Class II e-bikes. Both Class I and Class III e-bikes gotta be pedaled to move. They don't go unless you're pedaling. On the other hand, a Class II bike has a throttle and requires no pedal input to operate. In essence, a Class II e-bike is an electric motor scooter, a motorized vehicle. The Huron Valley Trail has a number of signs stating no motorized vehicles. This needs immediate and stringent enforcement. In closing, I ask the Board of Trustees to adopt a door-to-door solicitation ordinance constructed along the same line as NOVI's Do Not Knock ordinance. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Thanks for the comments. Okay, anyone else like to come on up and? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close call to the public, and we're gonna move on to reports. Our first report is DDA.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing?
Uh, some updates from our DDA. I had the opportunity, myself and Brian Keese, to meet with the owner of the New Hudson Plaza to discuss potential improvements that are going on over there, to make sure that we are on the same page with what needs to be done for those improvements moving forward. So I have faith that we're gonna see some significant improvements coming along in the next couple of months at that location, which we're very excited about. Based on some of my updates from the previous meetings, the DDA is moving forward on getting an electrical service installed at that Six Points parcel that they own next to the Zot Collision Shop. That should be installed next week, I believe, on Wednesday, so we're looking forward to having that availability. We will be working with the Sheriff's Department to moving forward, and the Planning Department, to ensure that anything that is lit at that location is placed in a way that does not conflict with traffic patterns or any nuisance to drivers in that area. So we will be taking that into account. I had the chance to meet with the Zeal Branch Manager at the time and discuss some opportunities in the township with special events, how to get them engaged and activated in the community. They are still looking for a full-time branch manager for that location. They're hoping to have somebody in place by this winter. We awarded a FIG grant, SOT improvement grant, to Mission Church, and they were able to install a new front door at their location, so hopefully you've had a chance to drive by there and see there, or see that. It looks a lot better there, so we're happy that that project went through. We're still continuing to work on the property acquisitions for the Southeast Ring Road. We're working on our budget request for next year. Uh, our Economic Vitality Committee is hosting a fourth-quarter event on November 18th. It'll be a roundtable educational program. We're continuing with our second round of business retention visits. Uh, our fall display went up at the Six Points intersection. Hopefully you've seen that. Uh, we've had some really good response from the public that really seemed to enjoy it so far. Our fall flowers and banners went up at our public parking lot a couple weeks ago. And we have our goodies on the grand coming up October 18th. That'll be at Inspiration Park from 4:30 to 6:00. Our scarecrows will be at Inspiration Park again this year. They'll be displayed October 10th through the 31st. And then we're excited that Mitten Animal Hospital this November will be celebrating 10 years in business at our downtowns. We're very excited for them. Uh, we're looking forward to soon welcoming a business called Black Mountain Golf Lounge. They'll have golf simulators. Uh, they should be opening in the next couple of months. Uh, we're looking forward to a couple expansions in addition in our industrial district. We have an expansion with Pratt Miller that'll be coming up soon, and ZICE is gonna be doing some warehouse storage on another additional parcel. And then we're excited to have the ribbon cutting for the Reyes Coca-Cola Bottling Company that will be happening October 15th. So we're really looking forward to getting inside that location, seeing what they've been doing there, and getting some facility tours. So are there any questions before I conclude my report? Sorry, I know that's a lot of information. I appreciate it.
All right, Amy, thank you. Thanks so much. Are we gonna move on to fire? Chief Madeline?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, for the month of September, our fire prevention did 33 inspections totaling just over 2.8 million square feet, bringing the year-to-date total to 196 inspections and just over 14.4 million square feet so far this year. On average, our firefighters trained 12.5 hours this past month. Um, this month's focus will be on SBA air management and peer support training. We've actually got someone coming from the outside to talk to our firefighters on peer support. This year, or actually this month, we're up 26 calls from this time last year. For the month of September, we had 167 calls for service, bringing our grand total to 1,485 as of the end of September. Uh, this October 25th, we will be doing our annual Halloween party slash fire open house. Um, that will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We're running it a little bit earlier this year, uh, hopefully to get some of the younger kids in and out of there sooner, um, but we're inviting everybody to that. It's usually a great time, and we have a wonderful turnout. And my last item for this evening is, yes, ma'am?
What time was the Halloween party?
5:00 to 7:00.
Okay, thanks.
5:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
On the 25th, right?
On the 25th, yep, that's a Saturday. The Saturday before Halloween, that is. Um, and my last item is I'd like to introduce Evan Collinger. He's in the back standing up. He is our most recent, uh, part-time firefighter, and he was sworn in before the meeting. And then the last part I have is our most recent full-time fire, Robert Randall. I could have him come forward with his wife Kendra for her to pin his badge on this evening.
Thank you.
All right.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And hey, welcome to the township. We really appreciate you guys.
Come by the hall and see us. Love that. We'll give you candy.
All right, Lieutenant.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, really quickly, um, I furnished a copy of the tri-annual report. Does anyone have, have any questions on that document? All right. Right along. All right, so next up, uh, a quick, uh, bye, everyone.
Really knows how to clear out a room.
Yeah, I know, every time. I have a quick update to the scam that I referenced, I believe it was last meeting, where the township resident lost 350,000 bucks. We were able to set up a meet. Our victim was intending to cancel, so, um, the crook said they needed 150,000 to cancel. Uh, we involved several agencies. We are, we tried to get it steered to Lyon Township, but they, they didn't wanna change the location, so we met them in Novi at the, um, Penn Express. In attendance, we had the DEA, the ATF, ICE, FBI, Homeland Security, our FAT team and line detectives. Uh, so these two individuals, they flew into town, they met with, with our victim, and we were able to take them down and take them into custody. Uh, they're both currently still sitting in Oakland County Jail with a $250,000 cash charity bond. And oddly enough, um, after, several days after, uh, these guys were incarcerated, our victim is still receiving phone calls, right? They were, they wanted, so he, the bad guys were supposed to pick up 90,000. They never showed up. Um, so the, the bad guys are still calling, asking for the other 60,000, which would have been the 150,000 they expected to get to cancel it. So I, I, I don't know if this, you know, organized crime cell is just so large and compartmentalized that they don't realize we set them up, or if they intended to actually do harm to our victim, but we, we, we decided not to schedule another, another meeting, since everything we have is blown, but unreal, unreal. I'm actually excited we took two players off the board, and we'll, we'll see what happens.
That's actually very cool.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was. I wish we could've got it here last weekend. I don't know why they take the credit for our hard work. I mean, it's a lot of man-hours went into that, and we're still working now. Um, and, and lastly, uh, the national, just another reminder about our National DEA Takeback again, that's gonna be Saturday, October 25th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM is when we partner with the DEA to accept, uh, prescription medications. It's just on a Saturday, off hours. Here at the substation, we, we, we accept it Monday through Friday, and even on Sunday, if an individual presses the call button, they can summon a deputy to take the medication. This is something that the DEA likes, the sheriff likes it, so we do it. But that concludes my report. Are there any questions for me?
Thanks, Tony. That is a good job, too.
Thank you, thank you. I got a couple more cooking, I don't wanna talk about it.
All right, we're gonna move on to the Planning Commission.
Yes, we had our meeting, um, on Monday, September 8, 2025. Uh, we had, um, and everyone was in attendance. We had no public hearings. We had no old business. Uh, the new business was Cary Family Dentistry Site Plan Review, and that actually was approved. They're gonna move, they would, they purchased the building at, uh, down the street on Grand River at 56461 Grand River Avenue, and the, um, Planning Commission approved the, um, the site plan, but they have to have a ZBA variance. So I think they're gonna be on your, Lisa, on your October 20th meeting. So, um, anyways, but there was a 5 to 2 vote, just NFYI, but, but it, it did pass. We also had Project Flex Site Plan Review on there, and that's, uh, the South Hill Industrial Park West Units 2, 5, 6, and 7, and that's for a proposed data center and of six buildings, and, uh, that was favorably approved by the Planning Commission, and that actually was all of our meeting. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything if I can.
Does, does that have to come to the board, the data center?
Brian?
No.
No, because it's...
No, it's a permitted by right use.
Okay. Um, okay, I have a lot of concerns about data centers based on, uh, a lot of communities I work with, so maybe we can talk afterwards and see what kinda, how it was set up in terms of, uh, the use of water and electricity. Okay?
Okay.
Let's talk.
All right, we're gonna move on. Uh, ZBA, Lisa, anything? Lisa?
You'll have to ask Brian, 'cause I was not in attendance.
We did have a meeting. Uh, we had, uh, two variances requested, actually. Um, one was a private individual on Horseshoe Lane that was, um, not approved. Um, I am sorry for... Give me one second.
Sorry.
I don't recall what the other...
I should've reminded you that, uh, or at least given you the heads up, like, hey, I don't know what happened.
Nope, it's my own fault. I, I knew you weren't there.
Something on 8 Mile?
The other was a, I...
It's the Sheldon.
Yes, we did hold the public hearing for our other applicant, but because we were short on ZBA members, we did not make a decision, so, uh, that applicant is gonna come back at our October meeting for a formal decision for, uh, but that's, like, um, they have an existing patio that they need, uh, they would like to improve, uh, but it's an unconforming structure today, so, but that one is pretty straightforward, and will be on October's agenda.
Okay.
And the, as Patty mentioned, the, um, the, is it the dentist's office?
Yeah, she's moving, she actually isn't already in our township. She's over in by Becker's Grocery, and so they purchased the old barber shop. It's been quite a few many things. They purchased it, and she wants to have her dentist office there.
Okay.
That'd be super exciting.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
All right, sounds good. Moving on, Building Department, Tony?
Good evening. So, um, well, I'm playing catch-up this week. I was out last week, uh, running Code Of Officials Conference of Michigan as part of the Board of Directors, and, uh, I wanted to mention, uh, as part of our fall conference every year, we hold a fundraiser. We raise money, uh, for a scholarship fund for young folks going into, uh, the trades, or if they have to pay for classes and books or anything like that. So I wanna mention that because, um, uh, uh, i-if you know of any, anybody who is going to school for construction management, or architecture, or civil engineering, or, or, or the like, or even, uh, going to a different kind of trade school, and they have to pay, is, you know, 'cause some of, some of your, uh, apprenticeships, they don't really have to pay, but, uh, some of, some schools, they, you know, many schools, they do, so. Send them my way, please, uh, have them contact me, because, uh, this year we gave out $8,000 in scholarships to four individuals, and so, yeah, it's really, it's, and, and the trades are hurting for people as, I, I think everyone knows that now, you know, and, uh, so we're trying to encourage and, and help them along, if you will.
Tony, could you send me an email about that, because I will share that with my 12th grade students?
Oh, yes.
Do a whole college, uh...
Good idea, Lisa.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know, I'm gonna break it.
Excellent, thank you, yes. Um, we have, uh, just continuing to streamline our, streamline our processes in the, in the Building Department. Uh, we don't have, I don't have any large announcement, or we, we, uh, large announcements. We did approve, uh, uh, Reyes, uh, the Coca-Cola distributor for occupancy. We're still finishing, finishing up a few things over there, but, and, let's see here, uh, we issued a permit for Walmart's, uh, significant remodel job, and we, uh, issued 18 single-family home, uh, building permits in the month of September, and we are continuing, uh, to improve our functions in BSNA and, uh, and to change and streamline and improve other, uh, policies and procedures, including how we treat cell tower, uh, equipment replacement and things like that, uh, and, and generators. We just made a policy change today for, uh, uh, generator, residential generator permit applications and pro, and the inspection process, trying to streamline it and, and lower our cost a little, I'm sorry, lo, lower the cost of the applicants a little bit. And, um, let's see, that's about, that's about all I have.
Yeah. Tony's doing a really, really good job, and I'll tell you, uh, that whole being on that board for the, the building is really a great thing, and he's got some cool things coming up. He asked, uh, he told me this was his hardest year of the board because of what he had to do, and it gets a little bit lighter in the next three or four years, and at, what is it, the last year, you're the president?
Uh, yeah, it's an eight-year, an eight-year commitment. I'm the treasurer now. I was the education director, uh, up until the other day, uh, and it was, yeah, that was, that's the heaviest burden there. Yeah, at the end of your ten, at, at the end of your stint, you're, you're, you become the president for the, for the, for the last year. I'm not, not a very presidential kind of guy, but, uh, I'll, I'll do my best.
Well, it's good, representing the Lyon Township up there. I think that's great.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Tony? Okay, we're gonna move on to the water, and just to let everyone know, the water is very clean. No, it's going. It, it, it's, it's a big project. We got a lot of things underway. Leslie's been working on the, the tower, the Milford Tower, which has been, you know, we're approving different designs and the footings, and, um, we got the doors on our, on our new treatment plant, so that's all tightened up, and, uh, that's going along really good. The plumbing is gonna start going in, I think, this week. I'm still hoping and praying that we turn that on by the end of the year. So that's kind of where we're at in the water situation. Any, anybody have any questions about it? All right, well, that'll conclude our, our reports, and we have two public hearings tonight. First one is the consideration to approve the vacation of the New Hudson Road inside the Supervisor's Plat. And Amy, I don't know if you wanna just give a real quick, anything on that before we open the public hearing?
There was, uh, a memo included in your board packets explaining the processes that we're looking at for tonight's meeting, but it's for those properties located outside of the plat, this is the final step, um, so that property that gets vacated will revert to the original property owners by parcel. Uh, for those inside of the Supervisor's Plat, this will move us forward to the next step of going through the Circuit Court to finish the process moving forward, but I think everybody's pretty much been updated on the plan.
I just, for the record in the office.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, that's all good. So we're gonna open the first, uh, public hearing, and that is the road inside of the Supervisor's Plat at 6:25. Anyone in the public wanna come up and talk about that? Now's the time to do that. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close that public hearing at 6:25, and we're gonna open up the second public hearing, and this is the consideration to approve, approve the vacation of New Hut, New Hudson Road outside of the Supervisor's Plat. We'll open up that public hearing at 6:25. Um, anyone like to come up and talk about that one? Seeing no one, we're gonna close it at 6:25, and we're, uh, gonna move on. We've got, uh, no unfinished business. We're gonna move on to our first, uh, item in new business, which is the consideration of the approval of the vacation of the New Hudson Road inside the Supervisor's Plat.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-22, which is a resolution approving the vacation of New Hudson Road inside of the plat.
I'll support.
We have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move to the second one of the, the second item, is consideration approval of vacation of New Hudson Road outside of the Supervisor's Plat.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-23, which is a resolution approving vacation of New Hudson Road outside of the Supervisor's Plat.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to the consideration and the approval of ordinance 8-25 to amend the Charter Township of Lyon Code of Ordinance, Ordinance, Chapter 36, Private Roads, Article 1, in general, Section 36-4, Dividing, Partitioning, and Assembling Land and Road Frontage, and Article 3, Design Standards, uh, Section 36, 19, Roads. And these, again, we are going through our roads, our private roads. If you all remember how we changed to make private roads a thing in the township, where it wasn't before, we're, we're running into snags where people would like to build homes on one place in the, in the private road, and, and we have to turn them down unless they pave the entire road. We don't think that's fair, and we wanna kind of tidy up the language, and Brian took the private road ordinance, and he just made a few changes, and you can see them in red, and we think that this'll help. We have several applicants that are asking to build houses on private roads, and we have to turn them down unless we change this ordinance. And that's the idea, it's here. This is to make it reasonable. Now, Brian, if you wanna add anything to that? Um, I know there was some, there were some questions about the 18-foot, and I know, Sean, you had mentioned the 20 to 18. Well, some of these private roads are 18-foot wide, and, and we don't wanna make them rebuild the entire road, uh, to get it to 20-foot wide, because that's unreasonable also. They're already at 18. You, you had made a, also a comment, you'd like to hear the, the fire departments take on the 18, so you can go ahead, and they're here, so...
Yeah, I mean, code requires 20 feet for apparatus access, right? I mean, that's a standard, and so, I mean, I think in B1, uh, it kind of allows you to determine that, you know, it's, it's unsafe or impassable, and, and really gives you kind of a wide berth to say, this road needs upgrades before any divisions can be, uh, made. I just, not that I thought that Brian would've written this in a vacuum and not talked to you guys, but I just didn't know if you were comfortable with... I mean, to me, I guess the way I look at it is if a road's in and it's passable and you guys don't have an issue with it, then could it be considered legal nonconforming as opposed to then reducing our minimum standard? Can't we just call the road legal nonconforming and leave the requirement at 20, but leave it to you guys to determine whether or not something that's 18 is still acceptable, rather than forcing you to accept 18, which is not what this says? So I think one gives you the ability to say, it's not 20, but it's still good. If we, if we reduce this from 20 down to 18, then it's saying you, you must accept it at 18. Now, again, in B1 above, it gives you some other language to, you know, ask for improvements, but I just, and when I spoke with John earlier today about it, I didn't wanna make a big deal about it, but this is first, this is the, the first shot at this. So my preference was just to simply leave the 20... simply leave the 20 alone, understand that these roads are non-conforming, and that as long as you guys are okay with signing off on something and saying, oh, this is a 30-year-old road, it doesn't meet today's standards, but it's safe and passable, then that's documented, we're covered, but we're not reducing our standards to less than what the fire code would generally call for. That was just a comment I wanted to make.
I will say, that's exactly the same thing I've written down. I did. Except, you phrased it a little better. But yeah, the 20 feet's the one that came out too. But I mean, if we leave it at 20 feet, or say, or say something to the effect, or approved by the fire marshal.
See, I think about what John said, and even, so if it's, if it's all 18 feet right now, and it's passable, then you're calling upon that, that person who wants to build, or, you know, create those lot splits, you're requiring them to now widen, and you're, to 20, and you're now taking, not that it's a big deal, but you're now taking two feet of someone else's yard. Like, and again, I know, like, if somebody took a foot off of my front yard, I would not, I really wouldn't care. But, you know, in my circumstance with, as you all know, I live on a private road, and if somebody ended up doing a lot split, and then it's at the end of the road, now you're asking that new homeowner to widen it to 20 feet all the way down.
But you're also asking the guy who wants to build a private road, or lady on their property, to build 20 feet when everybody else is allowed to just get by with 18. My thought is-
But this is only for existing.
It is, but, but you're, you're reducing the standard, and I'm not saying they shouldn't be able to, because I don't, I don't have a problem with the 18. I guess I just don't like the way it's, it's phrased to force them to accept 18 when 20's the standard. Instead, I prefer them to have the ability to accept 18 if it's passable and acceptable, and allow there to be a caveat where they can, they can determine or deem a road to be acceptable at something less than 20. Because what happens-
See, that depends on who we have in that particular position, and, and in the future. Like, I'm pretty sure that our current fire department would be, like, agreeable and work with people, but in 10 years from now, we have no control over who is within that position, and, or within, you know, planning. So, now you have somebody who has an 18-foot road, a road, and now that, that person who wants to build that new house and do that lot split, if, because it's not like, you know, it says up to, what does it say, up to four, or no, up to six. This could be just one lot, and now you're asking that one person to widen a road potentially, if it's at the end, they got to widen that whole thing that has been in existence and is passable. And I, I think that it is, I would be very uneasy saying, well, our consultants in our fire department would be, would be reasonable, but that does not include what would happen in the future. And I see your point, I just disagree with you.
Well, but the number's 20, and we've just decided that it's 18. So, if it's 17.9, well, then they've got to go and still widen. I mean, to me, I think we should be more focused on whether or not the road is passable and acceptable to the people who have to use it. And so, we're just picking a number, but the code says 20. So-
We're not picking a number, Sean. They went out and actually did a lot of measuring of a lot of these, these private roads. And, and that's where they came up with the, you know, we, we had a big conversation about this, the fire department, myself, and, and he said, really, I mean, the actual width of the road should be 24. If we're trying to make it so that the fire trucks can pass each other, they can't pass each other at 20, and they're not going to pass each other at 18. And so, that's why we come up with 18. If, I mean, 18 is plenty of room for anybody to get down, turn around, and come back, okay? But they're not going to pass each other unless it's 24. So, that 20 and 18 and all that stuff really doesn't matter because it doesn't make a difference. They need 24 to actually pass each other.
24 is the current standard if someone's building a new private road, right?
Exactly.
So-
That's why the 18-
The 20 was pre-existing.
The 20's in the International Fire Code, which we adopted as well.
That's what I'm saying. Where did the 20 come from as our baseline?
So, I guess in my mind, I trust the chief, I trust the fire department, and so, my thought is, is that I would rather just leave the 20, but then allow some caveat, or some flexibility for them to make a determination that it's acceptable, just so that way we have it. So, otherwise, I mean, 18 becomes the new standard. The standard's not 20 anymore. I know, and I know we're talking about existing roads, but I don't know.
Only existing. Only existing.
Right.
And kind of something to go off, Assistant Chief Harbin was dealing with this, and one of the things that he did mention to me, and it makes perfect sense, is these were roads that were approved by the township at some point in time in its development. There are very few codes in the fire code that allow us to go retroactive on anything. So, Assistant Chief Harbin and myself, we're kind of looking at it as, at that, that standpoint, that we can't go out and change buildings to upgrade their systems unless they meet certain criteria going forward. And that's kind of what this ordinance is, is anything being built in the future for a private road has to be built to this new standard. But anything that was prior approved under whatever ordinances, rules, and regs of the township, are, it's kind of the hand we were dealt, and that is the roads that are there. There won't be any more of them. There could be less. You know, if a developer comes in, decides to get rid of that road and completely change it altogether, they could go away. But in our mind, unfortunately, it is what we were dealt, and like, a lot of them are saying, they could look at a resident to go through, and they're buying into this. They know what they're buying into as far as access and things like that, or I would hope people would do that research and think about, hey, my car may barely fit down this road, what about a fire truck? We can't say everyone is going to think that way, but these roads were built, they were approved. How can we force someone an unruly cost to go through? I mean, this could be hundreds of thousands of dollars to go through and make these upgrades for something. The road costs more than the house itself.
And I don't think we should try to do that. I think as long, I think B1 is the most important language in this, in this document, which talks about you having the authority to require reasonable upgrades to the road to ensure safe access to the properties assessed by the road, including but not limited to drainage improvements, road widening, improved gravel, or paved surfacing, or tree, and vegetation trimming or clearing. If you have access and you're good with it, then it doesn't matter whether it's 20, or 19, or 16. I'm not saying that I have an issue with the lower number. I just think it's putting you in a spot now.
Yeah. I, I understand what you're saying, and if you guys all agree to something like that.
But I also think, think it puts them in a spot the other way.
See, I agree with John.
See, because if, if he says, okay, I can't get by because there's big trees in the way, and the guy doesn't want to move it, that becomes a fight, and it puts them in the middle. It's there, you see what I'm saying?
I don't, but can you try me again, though?
Well, it's like if, if you put the onus on the fire department to make the decision if 18's good, or 20's good, and say they say 20 when they have a fight with the guy saying, no, you're saying the brush is in the way, or the tree's in the way, I got to remove the tree, to get you to say, okay, to get the fire truck down if it's 18 or 20. You know, you're saying, let them have that. They, they can, they can actually say no or yes. If it's 18, if they don't want to say 18, they can say it's 20.
I'm going to vote for this no matter which language we have, because I, but I'm just trying to make it to me, giving them some flexibility, but then also the tools. Like, I think it's good. I don't want to go back to old private roads and start making people, forcing people for upgrades for this much, you know.
No, it makes a lot of sense, Sean. And just so you know too, because I went ahead and did some additional research, just to see, hey, is this just an anomaly, or whatever that is. When you look at some other departments, or, you know, other areas, particularly out west, but nonetheless, Washington, California, I think Oregon, they have provisions in there. So, depending on how many homes were on certain streets, they would even allow 12, 14, 16 that graduated scale. So, it's, it's not that we would want to suggest that, it's just saying, you know, as far as looking at differences versus a solid 20 versus some differential, seems like out west, they, they've adopted some of that stuff. Now, I'm not asking, they're saying, we're going to adopt any of that. But it is in place in other places. That's, that's the only thing. Just, just to give this a little bit more thought in, in the 18, in, that is existing and acceptable.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good. I just, I wanted to bring up my question and concern, and if everybody else is comfortable with it, I'm, like I said, I'm going to vote for it. I just, and I don't have any issue with them being less than 20 feet. I don't. It's just how it is. It's unreasonable for us to go back and try to make, like you're saying, something that was approved, something that was built properly many years ago, change with the times, because one house is going to be built down this road. That's, that's not appropriate, right?
Fire trucks have gotten bigger. Things have gotten bigger, and they can't help that those develop. And that's why the codes change, and moving forward, unfortunately, I hate to say it, but it is what it is. Those are the cards we're dealt, and we will still respond. We will get down there and do everything we can to make things work. Could it be more optimal? 100%. Yes, it could be, but-
Sure.
We've, we've got other areas in the township that we can't even access because of the way things were built. And we have adapted to put plans in place to make those things work, so.
Okay. Thank you.
We just had that, actually.
What's happening?
With the bridge. We just had that with the bridge.
That's kind of what I was leading to without saying.
Yeah.
What if we just strike that one out? Just that number two out?
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah. Why can't we just strike that out?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Well, I guess it does give a minimum standard still. The number still gives a minimum.
Yep.
You know.
Whatever, however you guys decide, we will go with.
Can I, where did the 18 come from? If, if the fire code says 20?
We had several of these roads that we checked.
Okay, so we went out and measured, and we said, okay, 18 seems like it's generally good, and we have some in that range.
At the minimum, and they, a lot of them weren't even consistently 18. There would be like, maybe a certain area that was down to 18, and then they would widen up again. But 18 was a consistent minimum, we found.
I guess, I mean, my, my gut thought on this would be, leave it at 20 and add a, unless deemed accessible by the fire department or something, if 20 is what the fire code says right now. That way, it's still, that's our goal. But if you say, great, or add that language, even if you choose 18, because if you find one that's 17 and a half, and we've now said it's 18, we're still having this situation if you guys were to say, yeah, we can still fit. So, that's just, I'll throw that out there, and-
So, for what it's worth from the administrative standpoint, my preference is to set it much lower, or strike it, and then give us the ability, or we have the ability under B1, to require improvements to that, the alternative going the other way, setting it 20 and saying, well, fire and engineering can relax the standard. I hate that in the future, because some homeowner inevitably next year is going to say, well, you did it for that guy, why won't you do it for me? And then, we've got to justify that.
So, because this is only talking about pre-existing ones, it's not like this number is going to set what anyone is doing going forward. It's just, can we let them split the lot and build another house?
Correct.
In that case, I guess I would also be on board with just strike two and leave it discretion in the first item.
What happens if it's 16? What happens?
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. Any number seems like it's going to be arbitrary.
But B1 is the most important piece of this, which is to say, we can get there or we can't.
And maybe the, the entry of the road's wider, and as it goes back, it gets narrower and narrower, and-
But, but maybe there's one house at the end of the road. It's just one house. And so, if it ends up at 12 feet, it's just one house. You're not having a lot of traffic.
You guys can use that whole scale logic that you found elsewhere, if you felt like you needed something to fall back on and point to, or-
If we're coming off the 20-foot standard, then, then who cares about the number anymore? We care about it being accessible. And I didn't make, I guess that was one of the things, but, yeah.
Yeah. I'm good with that, because the 18 just seemed arbitrary, was my-
Well, it wasn't, but you could think-
I'm hearing, I'm reading it.
There was some science behind it.
I appreciate the research and trying to establish a number.
There's a lot of work went into that 18, believe me.
I think Bruce really wants to keep it at 18, so he doesn't have all that work for not.
So, we have a problem with doing that.
But, so right now, we're, we're asking to move this along to second reading, which gives us 30 days for you guys to come back and say, hey, we thought about this, and we really want the 18, and this is why, or-
I like the generality, that we can do research and figure it out. And each case may be different, depending on the conditions.
There's still a lot of private roads.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are. A lot, a lot of room to think.
Huge structure at the end. You might want a bigger piece of equipment to be able to fit.
Property rights are so important.
Depends on how long it is.
And times has changed, and I like what you said.
Honoring yesterday and building tomorrow, I think, is our motto. It's written down somewhere, and honoring yesterday means leaving certain stuff just alone, because people like it that way, they want it that way, and it's been that way for a long time.
Yeah.
Times has changed, and you're right. Fire trucks have gotten a lot bigger.
Oh, yes, they have. Bigger and a lot more expensive.
Yes.
And they can push stuff out of the way a lot easier.
Yes, if they need to, yeah.
You guys love ramming stuff with your $2 million fire trucks, right?
I'm sure they would. I wouldn't want to.
Go park in the fire lane.
I'm sure the guys would like it.
All right. Well, that's a great thing. Want to make a motion to do that?
If you'd like me to.
Actually, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. It's just for number five. Just for clarif, clarification, it says divisions of parcels on private roads, blah, 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 result in more than six lots, may be permitted without paving the existing road. And then, the second sentence is, compliance with current engineering standards for stormwater management shall still be required. Is that still in reference to the lots that are six, or are the division of six lots, or is that all divisions?
All divisions.
Okay.
It's the county ordinance, and your ordinance follows it.
Okay. I just didn't know, and I had zero signal this weekend to call you and ask.
So, should that compliance actually be .6, then, if it's not intended to only be on six or more splits? Because I can see lately, since reading of this, being lumped in with that.
Because that's how I initially read it, but is-
That probably would make sense to make it its own line item. I didn't even notice that when I read it.
Okay, then, yeah, that's good.
Can you do that?
So, we need a six.
Okay.
Well, I guess it would be five if we got rid of two and everything shifts out.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, it'd be fine.
It's its own.
Yes, it's own. Okay, sorry, Brian.
I'm going to motion that we move ordinance number 08-25 to second reading with the amendments discussed this evening.
I'll support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, guys. All right, we're going to move on. Consideration to approve First Amendment to Agreement of Sale Offered to Purchase Real Property. And I'm going to let Leslie explain this to you guys.
This is one of the parcels for Southeast Green Road. You did approve this agreement in your consent agenda, I believe, last month. The modification came from working with the title company. This one's kind of complicated because there's some swapping of property going on. And anyway, and so, the agreement under Item 3 added anti-way easement over the township property. It's the last line on my sheet of page one of the agreement. That's the only modification, and that was for $10. And I would also recommend that if the board is inclined to approve this modification, that they also allow the township supervisor to negotiate any minor changes, because this has to go back through title, the title company, and I really would hate to lose a month to close this deal for something like $10, for example.
It's a good idea.
Can we negotiate that $10?
Okay. Does everyone kind of get where we're going with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement of Sale Offered to Purchase Real Property. Do I have to list their names?
I don't think so.
Okay. About the address? No, no address, because it's-
I'll support.
With the suggestion that Leslie had added to that?
Oh, yep.
As a amendment.
To allow the township supervisor to negotiate any minor modifications?
Geez, how did I miss that? Sorry about that. Yes. Okay.
All right, motion to support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to the budget discussion, and this is basically to set a date for the workshop, and I guess that's what we need to open up, is we can put this together.
Yes, because we have early voting starting, and they use this room, so if we wanted to have a workshop, we can't really have any other place to be displaced. So, it starts on the 25th. They will be setting up on Thursday to 27th, but just to set up, it's fine. We can put a big square table up anyhow, so we're good up until that date. But if anybody has conflicts-
What date was that, Michelle?
So, we have, the 25th is the-
Are we voting?
And setup is-
That's a Saturday, right?
We set up on, we have EV set up on the 23rd, which is a Thursday. So, anytime that week or before, if you guys, you know, we're, we're still trying to get our numbers in. So, I don't know if you'd rather roll into right after the election, that next week, or if you'd rather do it one night after work, however you guys.
Is it substantially better for you to be after the election instead of before?
I mean, what do you guys, I mean, I've got a lot of help with them, helping with the budget, so, I mean, I can attend. I just don't know, I worked on the election budget, and I worked on the budget.
I almost called it done already.
Okay, I don't know how close we are.
Well, we want to get into you, have some time to go.
I always like more time with it than less, but if-
Do you want to do it in the first week in November? I mean, can we do that? You guys okay with that? Like, first week in November?
You mean after the November meeting?
Well, it's the second week, because what's happening is, the fourth is that, Wednesday is our meeting.
Well, because then we'll have December if we need to meet again, you know. No, we'll have the end of November.
Unless we have a special-
Or have the end of November.
Otherwise, we're looking at special meetings.
Yeah.
Can we do it like the third week of October sometime, or?
I mean, I could do it the 20th or the 22nd, I think. I'm just throwing days out there.
I was thinking maybe 22nd.
I can't.
Of October?
Yeah, October 22nd.
Uh, yeah.
22nd.
That should work for me.
What time can everybody get here? Four, five, six? Four, five, six?
Please, does that work for you?
I am double checking.
The twenty-second, this Wednesday.
Twenty-second, I can make that, and I, without any traffic hiccups, I can be here by three-thirty.
Okay, so four o'clock, five o'clock, four-thirty?
You want to make, give yourself some time.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, that's, that's my travel.
Yeah, we're here, yeah, we're here, so.
You want to do four-thirty? I mean, is that, that would give you plenty of time, four-thirty?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with four.
You want to do four? You good with four?
I don't know if I can do four, I could definitely do five.
Let's do five.
But I don't know if that's.
Five P M.
Chris, you say five?
Yeah, five, five.
Okay.
Are you sure?
Let's do five, that's good.
Five's good.
So twenty-second at five. All right, so we good with that, twenty-second?
Yeah, and John always buys pizza, so.
Well, you go do it.
Anybody in the public who wants to show up, John's buying.
All right, we're gonna move on to the items removed from the consent agenda. Okay, Chris, you're up.
Oh, um, yeah, so the first one was the smart contractor, then I just wanted to be clear on which option that we're doing. I assuming option one?
Option one, yes.
Option one, we should've checked the box, I'm sorry.
You did ask that question.
I did ask, but I didn't check the box in the packet.
So option one, and then one.
So these are just the pass-through funds that we allocate to People's Express. So unless you wish to divert any of that, I would recommend a hundred percent.
Is there any, what, what possible reason would we?
I don't have one for you.
Okay, all right. Okay.
We don't have our own buses or any of the transport.
No, Oakland County is managing People's Express, and there are any complaints from your residents or anything like that.
And this, the term of this agreement is?
You'll do this every year.
Okay.
You historically have.
I don't know why I can't find that part.
It's on the last page.
Oh, term, July first. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So is that just that they're starting it as a July first, or would it be a July to July? Is that, is the county on a July fiscal year? I always get confused who's who. It just seems weird that it would be.
There's September.
July is the term of the agreement then, but, I mean, is there, it's their form, and I know how these go, we, we accept it or we don't, but. Okay.
Are you over that, Chris?
Yeah, that was, my only question was the option, so, okay, then I can make a motion to approve the agreement, noting option one.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, you had one more, two, right?
Yeah, that was the nine-mile pathway task force one, and I wasn't, so they were asking in that one who our, I believe who our representative's gonna be for that, and I.
John gets to sign it, it's John.
Well, I was wondering, actually, I was gonna say Patty.
Yeah, Brian has been.
He's been attending the meetings.
Brian has been attending all the meetings for us.
The city South Lion's got two lines on here?
They do, they have, they've asked to have two signers, for whatever reason, yes. We did have the option to request more lines on there. We could request all seven if everybody wants to sign. I had them sign, had one signature just to have done.
I mean, no one's buying anything with this, right?
Nobody's buying anything with this. So the, the process has been Oakland County Parks and Recreation has, for several years, they've got two phases. The eastern portion of Oakland County communities that have nine-mile access, and now phase two is the western communities that have nine-mile access. But this memorandum of understanding is basically an acknowledgement that there is a plan in place. The county hired O H M to prepare a corridor study and recommend improvements to pedestrian access and pedestrian treatments along that whole nine-mile corridor. This memorandum of understanding just basically says, we acknowledge that that plan is in place. We'll, we will participate where we can, we're not obligated to spend funds, but we're gonna use this as our guiding principles for pedestrian access along nine-mile.
So theoretically, when a developer comes in and says, hey, we're building something on nine-mile, we point to the thing and say, can you make it look like this?
Correct, correct, and I did have input with the development of that plan, and aligned it, aligned our portions of that plan with your pathway ordinance that's in place, with our master plan that we've already been talking about. So this document does align with the things that we've talked about. And actually, they've even softened some of their recommendations in our most rural portions of nine-mile, where they're not even saying, we will have a shared use path, it's just, hey, we're gonna have a shoulder that's big enough for people to, to safely utilize. So I've had input along the way, I think it makes a lot of sense, and nothing in that plan is outlandish. It's not like we're developing a full streetscape with buffers between a sidewalk and the road. None of that is, nothing unrealistic, in my opinion, is in that document, so.
Yeah, I would just say, like, our easternmost mile of nine-mile is the only one that probably kind of qualifies, and it'd be nice to pick everybody up to ten-mile, where it continues another mile west toward the city and actually central downtown for them, but.
Yeah, it's that section, and it's the section in front of meadows and woodlands of Lion, that's over closer to Griswold.
Yeah, I know we struggled with the wetland there when we were looking at a couple of those developments on the south side, trying to make connections.
Okay.
So to answer my question, it's you, you're the designated.
I have been, yes.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
I guess.
Am I gonna volunteer?
I was gonna volunteer Patty, because she's on the pathway committee, you know.
But I'm volunteering John for this.
John who?
Yeah, I who you.
Good question.
So Matt, do we need a, a formal approval of that one, since it was pulled off? Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize a supervisor to sign the Oakland County Nine Mile Pathway Phase Two Task Force Memorandum of Understanding.
I'll support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, that concludes our agenda for tonight. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about, and is everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll consider this adjourned. Thank you.
Nice work.
Six fifty-seven P M. On April, will they shut that down, or how are you doing? Oh, he's in there, great.
Find out what we need to do.
Our on-air schedule is.